I called the August the 14th, 2018 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. We do have a quorum. We have Pastor Todd Porter here from Life Changers Christians Church do our invocation. I'd like everyone to please stand and remain standing for our pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, God, we are truly privileged, God, to live in this great nation, this great state, and this great county. And Lord, we just ask your hand be upon this meeting tonight, God, this meeting that you have ordained. I believe you saw this meeting from the foundation of the earth. And so, God, we ask that your hand be upon it, Lord, that calm be here, Lord, that peace be here. And as you lead these officials, Lord, that have been elected by your people, God, we just ask that you give them wisdom, give them direction. Heavenly Father, Lord, that cooler heads prevail. Lord, in Jesus's name, we give you praise, we give you glory for every opportunity we have to serve you and to call on you, Lord. And we give you this meeting from this moment forward, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, welcome, everyone. We have two public hearings tonight. The first public hearing will be the proposed Grouse Ridge Road Transportation District, and I'll read the public hearing. The With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, August the 14th, 2018, at 7:05 PM in the boardroom of the County Administration Building, 340 South 6th Street, Wiffle, Virginia, for the consideration of the Grouse Ridge Road Transportation Service District of With County, for the consideration of street improvements to serve landowners pursuant to Section 15.2-2400 of the Code of Virginia. The purpose of this public hearing will be to hear from residents and property owners in the proposed district. A copy of the proposed district is available in the County Administration's office for review. Orders of the With County Board of Supervisors, Stephen Barr, County Administrator. Mr. Barr, you want to summarize or go over what we're...
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. As many of you are aware, the board over past 10, 13 years or so has used revenue sharing in transportation service districts as an avenue to bring 50-foot, non-state maintained right-of-ways into the state-maintained system. What you have before you tonight is a proposal. Last year, several people from the Grouse Ridge Road area approached us with a revised plan for making a state-maintained road into this subdivision. This has been a project that's been looked at for several years. There were other routes looked at trying to create a route into this subdivision. With changes in VDOT regulations allowing Platts older than 20 years to have roads constructed to state-maintained standards using revenue sharing, it became feasible, and the residents of Grouse Ridge Road created a petition to create a transportation service district. Last fall, Mr. Vaughn applied on behalf of the county to VDOT for revenue sharing for approximately 1.3 miles of road into Grouse Ridge Road. The VDOT approved, as of the end of June this year, approved this road for revenue sharing. That means VDOT pays one-half of the construction cost of the road, the residents pay the other half of the construction cost of the road. Instead of having that paid lump sum, the residents can petition the board to create this tax district for additional taxes over a period of seven years. I've got a map here, and I'll show this on the board. The state-maintained road will run from Pepper's Ferry Road all the way to the intersection of Quail Forest Road. All of the areas in blue are residents that we have designated to be in Area A that will be directly on the state-maintained road. The yellow is we're designating as Area B, which use this road but are not on the state-maintained part of it. I'll just turn around and show everybody here. The proposal that is before you and has been signed off on as required by law by more than 50% of the landowners who own more than 50% of the land mass. A copy of the petition and a copy of the spreadsheet showing the acreages been provided in front of you. The residents in Area A would be paying an additional tax of 46 cents for the seven-year period. The residents in Area B would be paying an additional tax of 35 cents over the seven-year period. We staff held a meeting on July 9th out at Max Meadows Methodist Church to let individuals know of this upcoming meeting and also to go over the information there. So, at this point in time, what is before you is a public hearing to hear comments from the citizens for the adoption of this ordinance. And should this ordinance be adopted, then the county would issue a check to VDOT for one-half of the revenue sharing so they could go ahead and start construction of this road.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barr. Ms. Lawson will be calling your names up to come and speak, the ones that signed up. You'll have five minutes to speak. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, you'll have 10 minutes, and we'll start the public comment period now. Ms. Lawson?
Okay. I'm sorry. The first on the list this evening is Joe White.
Mr. White, good evening.
Good evening. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. I'm not very schooled in public speaking, but I'm going to give it my best shot. As you can see with this map, this has been more than a 20-year-plus battle for us to try to attain a decent road into the neighborhood. There's been many, many people in the neighborhood who have spoken to members of the VDOT, members of the county supervisors, other politicians. I think some of the people have even spoke to the postal service at a point, you know, try to get their input into what it would take to get a decent road into our neighborhood. So, like I said, over the course of 20-plus years that have passed, all these people in this neighborhood, we've diligently paid our taxes, personal property and real estate. But the only tax dollars that we've ever seen come back that would affect us directly is from Pepper's Ferry Road out to the main interstate as far as snow removal and state maintenance of that particular road. The roads in our neighborhood are deteriorating to a point that it's going to be virtually impossible in a few years for even the rescue squad to get up there in case of a medical emergency. There's a possibility that we may lose postal service up in there. I worked for the postal service for 22 and 1/2 years and just retired from the postal service this past November. And I do know for a fact if the carrier deems that the road is deteriorated to the point that it's doing more damage to their vehicle, the postal service will deny service to that particular area. And that's something that I know some of the elderly people that live in our neighborhood certainly don't want to see that happen. And that is a great possibility. But the main concern is, like I said, we've all paid our taxes, we have done, you know, things in the correct way and tried to take the proper channels to get this road into the neighborhood. And this is the really only possibility that we've ever seen that is tangible enough that we can reach out and touch it. All the others were just, you know, forces in the wind. This is the only opportunity that we've had to really upgrade these roads, and I hope and pray that it doesn't stop here. I hope and pray after this first seven years of extending this road into Grouse Ridge that we can do it another seven years and provide a state-maintained road to some of these other people over here in the yellow areas. I know I personally would not object to paying double taxation for the next 21 years if that's what it takes to get these roads up into this neighborhood. And I think there's a few people in the neighborhood that would agree with me. But of course, I'm sure there's some of them that don't want to see their taxes raised. I don't think any of us want to see that. But the benefits, from my perspective, certainly outweigh the cost in that neighborhood. And I thank you, and I certainly do hope that you would pass this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. White. Next person.
Okay. Next on the list, we have Ms. Elaine Griffin.
Mr. Chairman, could we get the speakers to tell us whether they live in Area A or Area B?
Okay.
I live in Area A.
Thank you.
Okay. Will you...you live in Area A or B?
I am in the B. I'm Bearclaw. Is that the yellow? I'm on the yellow part. I don't know, A or B, but I think I'm in the yellow.
Bearclaw will be in the yellow.
Anyway, my name's Elaine Griffin, and he's pretty much kind of covered what I was going to talk about. I did have a fire. My deck was on fire and started at my house in November. And they did come as quick as they could, but it was difficult. And the ambulance driver from Lead Mines, while she was checking me out, she said that a few months prior to that, they tried to get up there for a code, and they broke something very major on their ambulance. So, I'm thinking, if no other reason, that is a big reason, that we have to have access. And if there is an accident or whatever, and the emergency vehicles can't get in there, that's just, you know, and I lived clear at the end, so it's pretty scary to think that they wouldn't be able to get up there. And also, I'm sure it's been mentioned too, I wasn't here at the other meeting, and how unsafe the bus stop area, kind of makeshift bus area that there is for the children, right when you come over Pepper's Ferry Road, because people come up over there, and then there's the kids waiting for the bus. So, I guess safety is my main concern. And I've lived there 18 years, and it's been very difficult to get in and out a lot of times. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jim Brinkley.
Mr. Brinkley.
I'm on water.
Oh, water.
I'm sorry. They're mixed together here. Okay. Wanda, are you also on the water?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll come back to the water.
We'll come back for the water.
Okay. This one is Samuel Warren. I believe that... That's correct. Here with me.
I'll say they both just about stepped on my toes. The other thing I was going to say, like Elaine said, talking about the ambulance getting up in there. I'm a heart attack survivor, but the next time, I might not be that lucky, because they had a hard time getting up on when they got me this last time. And the road just getting so bad, it just turned up everybody's vehicles. Of course, I'm not one of them that comes out there 20, 30 mile air. I'm a five-mile air man myself, but anyhow, still tires your vehicles up, and the road needs to be done. I'm on a fixed income, but I don't care to pay the extra taxes to get the road done.
Which area do you live in, A or B?
I live in the blue area.
Blue area.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Next up, we have Kenneth R. Swipes.
They said it for me.
They said it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Buford Grub.
Evening, Mr. Grub.
Like I said, pretty much said everything. I live in the blue. I live the closest one probably to the road, about 3/4 miles in, but it's, like one of the other folks said, as close we've ever been, and I'm afraid we won't ever be this close again. And I'm definitely in support of it, and it's going to get to the point of being impassable if we don't do something. So, thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Travis Montgomery.
Evening, Mr. Montgomery.
Good evening. Live over in A area. Basically, just touching in what everybody else has said, the road is horrible. There's potholes in there. There's a bunch of us who try to fill them up the best we can, but it just ruts it back out. My mother had an accident three or four years ago, and it took the ambulance almost 15 minutes to get a mile down the road. That's ridiculous. Vehicle damage. Something's got to be done. We've only lived in the area for four years now, and from what I've heard, this is closest that it's ever been to actually become a reality. So, I'm hoping this can become real.
Thank you.
April Montgomery.
Together.
Okay. Next, Ben Hoback.
Evening, Mr. Hoback.
Good evening, sir. I'd just like to, I guess, pretty well reiterate what they said. I mean, I have a little girl that's almost three years old. I stay out of town a lot. I work on the power line, so stay gone more when I'm home. My wife, however, has to deal with it a lot in the winter, and I worry about her and the little girl, I guess, if she can't get in or out, and she needs to, as well as, you know, the school bus being able to get back there to get my little girl in a couple of years would be a great help, I reckon. I guess the biggest thing is, like, in this past winter, I guess several vehicles actually got stranded in the first initial dip, and VDOT actually had to come in there. I guess it's even illegal for them to access that road, but they accessed it to get some pedestrians that were hung up out of there. So, I mean, I'm totally for it. I own two lots in Area B, and as far as what the tax costs, it would be nothing to what we gained from it. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Veronica Lu.
Ms. Veronica, how are you?
Pretty good. Pretty much well, reiterating what everybody else said. The day that the ambulance ran off the road, I actually had to come from one job and be at the other one, and I don't have an option with my jobs. I have to be there. I have to get in and out. I've got a four-wheel-drive pickup truck. It does well, but I've switched to a two-wheel-drive car that if one of those wheels goes into one of our famous potholes, I'm stuck, and I'll have to call my son to come and get me out. I do live in the yellow area. I'm off Quail Forest is where I'm at. But we've talked about it amongst ourselves for many years to have this road repaired. The guys that do the road repair now, they do an awesome job on what they're able to do, but we do need someone to come in and really fix that road, get the drainage right, get everything right. So, like, the young couples, the elderly, the ones that depend on oxygen can get the help that they need, and we can have the service vehicles coming in and out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Sharon Coop. If I pronounced correctly.
Good evening.
Thank you. I just wanted to give you an idea of what it's like to have Grouse Ridge Road as your address. We have had a small child swimming pool sitting in our den for the last eight months because our roof leaks, and we've been trying to get bids for roofers to come and work on our roof. And when I give our address, immediately I, oh, Grouse Ridge, well, you know, we have to bring all our trucks in there, and we have to get a rollaway dumpster in there to take the shingles away. I don't think we'll bid on that one. So, for eight months, we have had a leaking roof. So, it's a really difficult thing. I dread saying Grouse Ridge Road, but I have to get some assistance. And it's not a problem. Any of us can correct ourselves, and we've tried as a community to correct it and repair the road. So, this is something where we have to reach out to the county commissioners and to VDOT and ask for assistance beyond what any of us can do, because it's become a serious problem. I meant Section A, by the way. Forgot to study that. So, we appreciate anything you can do to help us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Richie. Richie, your handwriting looks a lot like mine.
They said it all.
Okay. What's your last name? I already did.
That's a bit.
Okay. I was going to say Hedrick, so...
Blue area.
Okay. I'm not sure if this one right here, we can come back to.
I have no idea.
We'll come back to whoever I skipped there. I'm sorry.
Anybody else?
Let's see. We have Doug Gleison.
I have the closest lot coming into Grouse Ridge Road at 162-2, and we just drive a short ways to get to our farm on the left. And if I had to drive all the way to where these other folks live, I don't know that I'd have a vehicle left. I feel real sorry for them. I mean, they do a good job trying to keep that road up, but I think it'd be very beneficial to everyone up there if we can do something with that road. I just have a couple of questions, but I'm not sure if you guys can answer them. We have a farm going down Grouse, which we have a fence for our cattle, plus the telephone poles are right on our property. Who takes care of the...we'll take care of the fence going down there if it's on that 50-foot right-of-way? Is that something we have to take care of?
VDOT does not do any relocation of fences.
So, who's going to pay for that?
If it has to be relocated, but we're going to have VDOT meet you out there and see. Generally, they do the work within where the road exists right now, so...
Because there's not 50-foot between my fence and the drop-off of the railroad at a lot of places. So, that'll fall back on me probably.
Look, I'll get in touch with you, and we'll get with VDOT and talk to them.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two more. Okay. I believe this is Gladys Yates.
Ms. Yates.
Hello, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to thank the county staff. Since I have been working with the county staff, which is a little over a year, they have been very cooperative and provided lots of information to us. I am here to speak in favor of this, but I do want to acknowledge the county staff and what they have done in the last year to try to move this forward. I understand this project has been on the hearts and minds of the folks who live up there for a very long time, and it really...the road is deteriorating. Every time I go into Thompson's, they say something to me about they can't believe that I don't have more damage to my car from the road. They say it's one of the worst roads in the county, and it's definitely one of the worst ones that I've been on. So, I would encourage the board to support this ordinance and allow for this funding request to go forward.
Thanks, Ms. Yates.
Ms. Yates, you're in the yellow area?
I am. I'm in A.
She's in the blue.
You're in the blue. You're in the blue.
I'm in B. I'm in B.
You're in the blue.
Next up, we have Jack Phillips.
Evening, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you. Greetings to y'all. Good evening. Like everybody else, I'm very much in favor. I really don't like the idea of a tax increase, but I do realize that we can't get the people in Richmond to really pay attention to this kind of thing, and that being able to get half of the financing is the best we can do. And to be honest, when I look at the tax money involved, I'm spending more than that on my car anyways, and I'm really concerned about the safety. So, that's all I really had to say, and I thank you for your time and attention to this matter.
Thank you.
Okay. We have one left. Who signed up that I didn't call out?
That'd be me, but they've covered it.
They've covered it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's everyone that's signed up to speak on the public hearing on Grouse Ridge Road Transportation District. But I know some people has come in. Would anybody else would like to speak concerning Grouse Ridge Road? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Next, we got a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, before you go into that public hearing and while everyone is here, do you all want to take action on this tonight, or do you want to carry this over to your next board meeting?
Does any board member have any problem taking care of this tonight?
I think they've said it all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 20-18...
We'll fill the number in.
We'll fill the number in. Have a second. Have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any question or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horney?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. The ordinance is so passed.
Then let's start.
That I don't know.
You want to take a three-minute recess till the next public hearing, or you want to go directly?
Okay. We'll be in recess for three minutes. Propose change in water rates. I'll read the public hearing notice. The With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing to give the citizens served by the With County Public Water System...excuse me. Public Water System an opportunity to comment on the proposed rate changes in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2119, and the subsequent revisions. The With County Board of Supervisors propose to change the rates changed for water service on August 16th, 2018 as follows. Current rate is 18.90, $18.90 for the first 1,000 gallons and 9.45 for the 1,000 gallons after that. Proposed rate is $20.79 for the first 1,000 gallons and $10.40 for every 1,000 gallons after that. The public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, August 14th, at 2018, beginning at or about 7:10 PM, and may be continued if necessary. The public hearing will be held in the boardroom of the County Administration Building, 340 South 6th Street, Wiffle, Virginia. Orders of the With County Board of Supervisors, Stephen D. Barr, County Administrator. Mr. Barr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just give a little bit of information to open up the discussion. We're with counties work hard over the last 20 years to provide municipal water throughout more of the county. From the original small systems in Ivanhoe and Austinsville to Speedwood and Max Meadows, the county water now extends from Speedwood to Royal Retreat to Whitfield to Port Chiswold to Graham's Forge to Buffer Camp to Patterson and Baron Springs. To accomplish this, the county has invested heavily into infrastructure, including the New River Regional Water Authority Plant. The annual amount of debt service on the water system is one median $566,755, including the annual payment to the New River Regional Water Authority Plant. Operational expenses include water purchases of $230,000 and operation and maintenance expenses of $622,000. The proposal for a 10% increase is to assist with covering the shortfall of the anticipated revenues and expenditures. The Water Department has currently been operating on a deficit balance but cannot continue to do so. The total debt of the Water Department is currently about $14.1 million. The rate has not been increased since 2015, so this proposed rate increase averages out to a little over 3% a year. The Water Department operates with the mentalist staff to ensure water quality, safety, and maintenance issues are addressed for the nearly 3,000 customers. The proposed increase would result in the average customer using 3,000 gallons to see an increase of $3.79.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. Again, if you're speaking on an individual, you have five minutes. If you're speaking for a group, you have 10 minutes, and Ms. Lawson will start calling your names, and the public comment period will begin.
Mr. Jim Brinkley. Sorry, Jim Brinkley.
Good evening, Mr. Brinkley.
Good evening. First thing I want to know is, why do you need an increase if the person's not hooked on the system? There's no cost to the county.
Well, you still pay the minimum.
Yeah, I pay it, but why do you have to increase?
Well, I mean, if we increase the minimum is $1,000. That's what you pay now, is $19.18. We're proposing to raise that minimum.
Well, it started at $11 or something, and then it's jumped almost double, and now we want another increase. For what? I'm not getting anything for that. If you can show me where I'm getting anything for it, I'll be tickled to death. But how do you charge for something that you're not providing?
Well, I'm not prepared to answer. I mean, it's road development, you know, requires us to make it mandatory hookup when we run the water line.
Okay.
And if you didn't hook up, you still have to pay the minimum water charge.
Road development... Rural development coughed that, but it didn't happen. All these people didn't hook up. Somebody fudged the...
But they're all paying, they're all paying a minimum charge of each month.
Yeah, they might be doing that, too. But how do you charge for it? I'm not satisfied until I get an answer for that.
I'll give him an answer. You're paying for it anyway, Mr. Brinkley. I know you own land, you own your own property. That money that the water customers are not paying is made up for your other tax money. So you're paying anyway. It, you're just gonna be paying out of the other pocket instead of the other pocket.
Okay. Y'all got water that comes from three of my farms, four of my farms. I don't send y'all, but I'm gonna have to, I believe, if y'all keep going in. Here in Grayson County, in Don't Work Springs, in Crockett, I don't get a penny for that. And I pay taxes on that land. That's water that y'all use, a portion of it. But I still don't understand where you're coming from on how you can charge me for something that nobody's using that's hooked up, or not hooked up or not using.
You're paying it right now anyway with your other taxes.
Paying it right now with what?
Your other taxes. What comes out of your fund?
Okay.
General fund dollars do not go towards our...
Well, how, how do we make it up? How do we pay out of our budget every year?
The revenues that come from the sale of water is what we use to pay the bills on the Water Department.
Okay. I don't use any water.
But what about your debt service?
Debt service is paid by the water users.
So the water company's paying in some way then?
It's an enterprise fund, yes.
But you're not using any water.
There's no shortfall.
But we're operating. Yeah, we're operating on a shortfall, yes.
Okay, where does that money come from?
Revenue that we get in collection is not covering the expenses.
So where does that money come from?
Right now, I mean, if we're short, we have to pay it up out of the small amount of reserves that we have left in the water plant.
Okay. Thank you.
So what was answered?
And, which you're right, Mr. Chairman, if, if we don't have that water, if we don't have a little bit of reserve, the rest of it would have to come out of the general fund. That is correct.
And that would be from everybody's taxes. I don't understand what you're asking, Mr. Brinkley. I mean, you know, rural development makes us, you know, require everybody to hook up.
To pay for something they're not using.
And you pay for a hookup charge?
Can you show me that, show me that in your article, point everywhere there was? And I'll be happy if you can show me that. I don't believe you can do it.
Okay, well, you, if you come to the county office tomorrow morning, we'll have that, we'll have everything there to show you what rural development requires us to do.
According to the county, according to the enterprise, y'all gonna put this in effect eighteenth, the increase.
The public hearing, yeah, August sixteenth.
It goes into effect?
Yes. If we pass it.
So why are we here?
If we pass it, we haven't voted on it.
Right.
We're here to hear your comments on it, and then we'll make our decision. We haven't voted on the reason or anything. This is a public hearing.
Is the preacher still here?
No, sir.
I was gonna get him to pray for y'all, make sure, listen, especially him. But that's not right. But again, With wasn't right, they even hooking up, I mean, paying for something that you're not getting. But then you're gonna do it again and again. That's not right.
Well, things increases, I mean, your electric bill increases, your cable bill increases, everything has an increase to it, sooner or later.
If you use it, I use, I use the phone, I use the power, and I pay for it.
But you could use the water if you choose to.
But you pay for it.
But the water's there if you choose to and never have to need it. It's there, and the meter's there.
I'm paying for something that really is, truly is mine. None of that water that y'all get comes from my places, believe it or not. Now you tell me, that's not right.
Mr. Chairman, the...
Yes.
The laws of Virginia allow the county to pass an ordinance that if we run a water line, your house has been so many fee to that water line, we can charge a non-user fee so that we can fund the water line. We count up how much non-user fees to help support building that water line, which provides water access, like the chairman said, to you if you choose to use it.
That's it.
You're choosing not to use it, that's not our fault. You've gotta pay the fee because the law requires you to pay the fee. So that's what you're paying for, and that fee's based on a thousand gallons used per customer, so when that goes up, that non-user fee goes up.
So, give me a refund. You know...
You're required to pay it if the law requires your payment.
Well, there's something wrong with that.
If you choose not to do that, you can challenge that if you want to. But right now, that's what the, the law requires.
The commonest wisdom of Virginia, my mistake when it comes to that.
Talk to your man in Richmond and his representative.
I have.
Okay.
And also, I remember, the old Spiegel, had a hearing, talking about how many people you had, this for the line and all this. Where'd they go? They disappeared, moved out or something?
Well, there's a lot, I mean, they're hooked to it and using the water.
No, no. You want me to show you some? I can show you a bunch of them. It didn't happen. And yet I'm painful. Also, over in his district, that price increase, rate increase from eleven dollars to nineteen, everywhere it was, went to fund, help fund his district. Do you remember that? I'm not sure, no. You needed some help, I'm glad you're getting up on the water line so they increased the water. If you go back and look at the minutes, it'll be on there. But we're funding this, funding that, and I'm not sending any benefit out of it, but I'm still not satisfied with paying for something that you don't get.
Well, Mr. Brinkley, I don't know how much clearer we can make it to you, but if you'll come in the morning, you know, me and the county administrator will sit down with you and talk to you.
All right.
Next person?
Next person, we have Ms. Swanda Brinkley.
Ms. Brinkley.
Can I talk from back here?
Can we pick, yes, yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm looking at this sign up here, it says, "With County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing to give the citizens served by With County Public Water System to speak." I'm not served by With County Water System. We are not hooked to the line. And I would like for you all to provide with me why it's necessary for an increase. Now, did the bills overrun what was estimated for the water line? Did the contractors overcharge, and you all had to go back and pay some more money? I mean, I'd like to see the breakdown why we need a water increase.
Yes, ma'am. If you'll come in the morning, we'll, we'll have it, and we'll show you.
But that's not gonna do me any good, but for if, if you all are doing this, and I'm sure this is a done deal, you're gonna increase the water supply no matter what anybody says. I mean, increase the bill. That's the way it works. I've seen it all my life. And I don't think me coming over, or even coming tonight, but I'm very passionate about this water line because I don't think it's, it's a justification to have it under these conditions. Now, he talks about the rural development, but I don't have anything to do with the rural development. You all represent me, and this should never have been to start with. It's wonderful to have water, and I hope those people that have it enjoy it. But it's not wonderful to have it at somebody else's expense. That's what bothers me about this whole thing. Then you come along, and for two or three years out there, there was several people right in my neighborhood that didn't have no water because the pump station didn't have enough pressure to get that water to that house. Then you come back and say, well, this is speed with water line second phase. I mean, this needs to stop. You people need to get yourself in gear. Now, that's what I have to say, and I would not, I don't have no regards or no hard feelings against you all, except that I don't think you're representing With County like it ought to be. I'm sorry, but that's the way it is. Now, I know some of you all are new, but it still follows through, and that's what I'm saying. No matter what I say here tonight, or if I come over and sit with Mr. Barrick for three hours tomorrow and go over all this stuff, this is a done deal. Things gonna be an increase in water because y'all need the money, and that's one way to get it. This county's going down the hill. I don't know whose fault it is, but I've lived here seventy-three years, and I've seen the changes that has come at this county level, and I didn't say that they're good. So you all get your shift together and look after the people instead of the politics. That's all I have to say to all of you, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Ms. Brinkley.
That's all she has.
Is anyone else like to speak?
Y'all got one more. I bet you five dollars y'all prove it.
It's a done deal.
No, ma'am, you're actually incorrect.
You what?
I said, you're actually incorrect.
How's come?
Because you do not know how I'm going to vote.
Oh, no, I don't, but I hope, honey, that you're different from the rest of them. It's all I got to say. It's a done deal, and that's the way I feel for that. And I thank you all for my, my time, and I appreciate you hearing me out, all of you.
Thank you, Ms. Brinkley, and Mr. Brinkley. And again, would anybody like to speak on the public hearing? Here and none, I'll close the public hearing.
Maybe if you put Don to work here, maybe we'll call him back, back to work.
Mr. Chris does a fine job. He, he works hard. Okay, we'll go right on into our agenda, citizens' time. Had no one to sign up, but is there anyone here would like to speak during citizens' time? Here and none, I'll close citizens' time. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. Entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I might get motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is any invoice, any member would like to pull out or discuss? Here and none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is minutes of the previous meeting of July the twenty-fourth, twenty eighteen. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any changes or correction need to be made to the minutes?
Hold on just a second, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure I had one, I don't think. On page twenty-four, Mr. Hale, that should have been Mr. Bone that Mr. Hale was talking about with the fencing up at the Apex Center. She accidentally put Ball instead of Bone.
Okay.
I don't want Joe to give me credit for anything I had to do.
Ms. Collins, you make that notation.
Is that the Apex Center?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes with the amendment.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to approve the amended minutes. Any other discussion? Here and none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Next item is old business. First item is noise ordinance. Mr. Barrick?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The committee met and reviewed the noise ordinance. I previously emailed it to you all. A copy of it, of course, is included here in the package. The primary changes were on page two. The exemptions to the ordinance should not apply to the, for the sound purpose of many ... Sound for the purpose of alerting persons to the existence of an emergency or the emissions of sound in the performance of emergency work. No provisions of the chapter shall apply to the emissions of sound associated with agricultural activities. No provision of this chapter shall apply to the emissions of sound associated with or in conjunction with industrial operations. The second part there, see the report of violation, that section was added similar to the property maintenance ordinance as requested previously, and that is any person agreed by the prohibited conduct above, which is not exempt, shall report violations to the sheriff's office and consolidated dispatch center, and the reporting person must provide their name and contact, and contact information. The county attorney has reviewed the revisions, and he does recommend prior to adoption of this, that another public hearing be held based on the changes.
What would be the board's pleasure on setting a public hearing September the eleventh? Do we have anything?
I'm not aware of any public hearing scheduled right now for that, and that gives us plenty of time to advertise.
Okay, entertain a motion, set the public hearing for September eleventh.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Public hearing is set. Next item, Appalachian Regional Exposition Center Authority Lease Agreement. Mr. Barrick?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you are aware, you appointed a committee. Mr. Hale and Mr. Ball met with two members of the Apex Authority, Mr. Johnston and Mr. Miller?
No.
Oh.
Mr. Litt.
Mr. Litt, that's correct. Met and reviewed the authority. I'll let any of them speak, but basically what you have for you is the recommended lease agreement that the committee recommended, or the, the two members from each group recommended sending forward to you all for consideration of adoption. Be glad to answer any questions or go over anything in particular on the lease agreement.
Does anyone have any questions or a motion to approve the lease agreement? Or not approve, I guess, I guess approve, approve the lease agreement.
I move that we approve it, get on with it. If they have some language changing, that's something you can negotiate with them. They are us, we make those appointments. This is not some foreign group. Let's give them the document and get on with it. We're compressing time toward the opening here.
Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, you know, I was on that committee, and I had some concerns, and after sitting down with, with the other people, you know, one of my concerns was the security at the events, they're gonna address that with their management firm. I questioned the ten years, and after sitting there with them, you know, they wanna make some improvements, borrow some money to, to add some buildings, of course, not using tax money, but money they, funds they generate. Like Ms. Lawson said last time, it, you know, what's done is done, and we all want to succeed, and I'm comfortable with the, the lease agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Any other question or comments? Here and none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Mr. Barrick, anything else in our old business?
Uh, no, sir, there is none.
Okay, going into new business, Economic Development Committee report.
The Economic Development Committee met on August second and recommends the following actions. Number one is to approve the, approve the construction contract with Crom LLC for the Raper Ridge Water Tank Project contingent upon county attorney review.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. You only go, why this hasn't come, didn't come through the water com- You only get, why this hasn't come, didn't come through the Water Committee?
Yeah, this project is ready to move, and my apologies to the Water Committee. Mr. Board's called last week. Mr. Bone brought this up last, or two weeks ago. Since I was going to be gone, there was not time to schedule a Water Committee meeting, so I put this before the Economic Development Committee to get action on it. You had already seen the bids on the Raper Ridge from Crom on that and had approved that. This is just approving the contract, so I appreciate the Economic Development Committee picking it up and running with it. We have a meeting with Rural Development on Thursday. Where this approval and everything else gives us the okay to start this project.
Okay. Any more questions? Again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Next item?
Mr. Chairman, if we could have a motion for authorizing Mr. Baer to execute the contract?
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Baer to execute the contract.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any other questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Next item?
Next item is to approve an amendment to the engineering contract with Peden Boards LLC to provide the full inspection of work on the Raper Ridge Water Tank Project. The total estimated not-to-exceed fee for part-time project representation is $15,600.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Anything else from the Economic Development Committee?
No.
Next item on our new business is Chintel cable service order.
Mr. Chairman, we placed our bids for the Apex Center. We received two bids back for phone and internet service, one bid for internet service only, after review by staff and after review by the Apex Authority itself. What you have before you is a recommendation for entering into the agreement with Chintel for 100 megabit service and nine telephones and up to four business fax lines for the Apex Center. This gives them the ability to get started, to have this in place within about early November.
Okay.
This will be a monthly, ongoing contract, and that's why I've shared it with the Apex Authority also, because this will actually be part of their operating expenses that they will be picking up after we turn everything over to you.
Okay. Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any questions, there are discussion?
Discussion, Stephen, you might not be aware, they've cut that with the putting in less fax lines.
Yes.
You don't need fax lines like that anymore. And there's a couple of other things that will reduce the price somewhat.
Yes. The, under the notes, I requested, and they have added adjustments will be made at the installation to the number of fax lines or desktop sets if more or less are needed. Therefore, adjusting the contract accordingly. So we did have that added. Thank you, Mr. Hale.
And it's $22 for each fax line, so if they just have one, it'll just be $22.
Mr. Baer, this is coming out of money that's already been allocated?
Yes. This is out of their operational expenses in their budget. We originally had budgeted for about $20,000 for the purchase of a phone system. We will not be outright purchasing. This is more of a lease operation with them and some other operations.
It says total contract value, $79,000. Is that what we're paying, or is it a monthly thing?
It's a monthly recurring cost, but that's over the total time period of the contract. Unless you don't pay that upfront, you pay a month.
And the authority will be responsible for that. We're just acting as the agent. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
I would like to comment. I think Chintel is a good choice in West County and Apex. It's going to get a lot of free advertising out of that, which Chintel does statewide. If you haven't seen it on TV, how they work in the community. So I think we're going to get some benefit from Chintel having it, and they're already represented in some parts of Westville anyway.
Yeah, I wish they'd come on down the road. Okay, here no more. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next item is victim witness program. Mr. Baer?
Yes, we have received this grant annually typically received. Sheriff's Office recommend approval of the Victim Witness Program grant.
Entertain a motion to approve, receive. Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Any question or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And Chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is West County Rescue Squad appointments.
Mr. Chairman, we have one vacancy on the West County Rescue Squad Board. Just wanted to let everyone know that. I don't know if we have an appointment to back in that place right now. You may have more information at this point.
Mr. DeMire's, Stanley had come and talked, will call me last Friday, and said because of his, some health reasons and stuff, he was tendering his resignation on the Rescue Squad Board. I told him to send us a letter and come talk to you, which I don't think he's done yet. But he has contacted me. It won't be removed from the board. Does anyone have any appointments to make at this time?
I actually talked to Ms. Lawson. Brian Bard actually approached me several months ago and said he would be interested. I guess it was probably in early February, and I wasn't sure if we appointed that as a board or my district or what. Then I found that we didn't have any openings. Mr. Bard was actually on the junior squad when he was in high school and then spent several years on the rescue squad. He owned, or co-owned the business, so he's got business experience. Of course, he works for the PD, so he does interact with the rescue squad. I think he'd be a good addition to the Board of Directors.
Are you nominating?
So I'll make that motion.
Okay. Have a...
I'll second that.
Have a motion, second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll need at least one more appointment in the near future, so...
We'll put this on the agenda for old business next time, and hopefully we'll receive a letter from Mr. DeMire since then, or if not, we'll just proceed.
Okay. Mr. Baer, you have anything else on our new business?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The Apex Authority Committee met this evening prior to the meeting and have a few items. In lack of a memo, I'm more than willing to give an overview of it if you would like, sir.
Yes.
And my apologies with my vacation last week. I was unable to have a meeting scheduled then last week for this to be on your agenda. The first item that you have in front of you, the county put out bids for, requested bids for a sound system. Responder Lee Hartman and Sons, Mr. Bone, Bone, and Ms. Cathy Patterson and others met on site with Lee Hartman and Sons and reviewed their bid. Basically, this puts 14 speakers inside the arena and speakers outside the arena, plus allows for some expansion, plus also allows for some video capabilities as well. So the committee's recommendation is to approve the bid from Lee Hartman and Sons of $115,242.40.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. For questions or discussion?
Mr. Baer, you know what my question is? Is this money that's already been appropriated? You might as well answer on all of them. At one time, I asked for a monthly breakdown. I got it one month, and I'm not sure what happened.
I got this, and I should have handed it out before I went into it. This is what I handed out.
I've already got one.
You got one, you got one, and Coy got one. I hand this out to the committee beforehand. This shows your current status, because you're asking a very important question. That is, where are we with what we have on the budget? And basically, up top, between where we are at the end of June, plus the funds allocated, we've got about $900,000 available in our budget to go towards this project. The items that you see there in green under the estimated expenditures are items that we are talking about tonight or that have pretty close to solid numbers on there. So, yes, this is money that is in the capital expenditure budget that we have laid out. Thank you.
Any more questions, discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Next item?
Next item, the authority had requested that one of the concession areas be outfitted with a fire hood for the using of a grill, grilling surface inside the area. Mr. Bone has worked with RGM to get the price for installing the hood and exhaust system. The committee recommended approval of the RGM quote, the amount of $19,331 for the installation of the exhaust hood.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
Is this for one kitchen or both?
This is for one kitchen, only one concession area right now. The committee recommends, and Mr. Bone, we'll go back and talk to them about possibly looking at putting just an exhaust hood through the roof on another one, on the other side. That way, the hood is in place and come back later if we need to add one on that side.
Is this going on the side with the handicap entrance and parking, or the other side?
This is on the other side.
That's where most outdoor activities are going to be, and that's where your food sale should be the motive. And that, that system, the real cost there is in the state required fire suppression system. The metal is not that expensive, but that fire suppression system is the thing. And anybody that's ever been on the Fire Department knows that's where most restaurants start, is in the grease accumulation. So you've got to do it right.
Mr. Baer, is that, at one time, they were talking about doing a... I don't want to call her a test kitchen.
Yeah, a commercial kitchen.
Is that, is this tied into that?
It is not. It is in an area close by to it, but that would be a separate item that they're looking to try and find other funding to do that. They can run programs.
Any other question or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Next item?
Next item, the county, the construction documents did not include by choice a lightning protection system. That was something that the county had indicated we would place bids out for separately. What you have before you is a response received from BFC out of Raleigh, North Carolina, for our request for a lightning protection system. This is for an early streamer emissions system. Recommendation from the committee was approval of this quote, the amount of $23,725, with the recommendation that the county engineer review all matters with them and make certain everything was in place with this system.
Okay, again, come from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any other questions or discussion?
If lightning hits us, will Mr. Hale be able to get the lorry up to 88 miles an hour?
I can't control where lightning hits, but you ensure control the metal damage that happens.
It's a movie reference.
Okay, any more question or discussion? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Mr. Baer, you have anything else on our new business?
I do, Mr. Chairman, and this one has come about quickly. Several members of the county staff that have previously served on our county picnic committee requested right before I left to form their picnic committee and discuss going a county picnic again this year. I was assuming that it would be a Friday in September, but this group is already trying to get a date set up and would like to look at having a county picnic next Friday afternoon. And just want to make certain that the county Board of Supervisors did not have any problem. And this includes all constitutional officers and the county staff here. They have all joined and worked together in the committee meetings and are making their plans as such. If the date should change, I'll be more than willing to come back to you and let you know. But as of today, I went in, stepped into their meeting to ask them if they were still crazy enough that they thought they could pull this off by next Friday.
What's that date?
24.
24.
So you're clarifying it, or just to clarify, they got a lot of work done while you were on vacation?
They did get a lot of work done. So if that's acceptable with the board, I would request the permission to close the offices on the 24th for an afternoon picnic and invite all of you to it. And it's either going to be at Rural Retreat Lake or at Foster Falls State Park.
It's Foster Falls.
Foster Falls, thank you.
What time is the picnic?
It'll probably be at 1:00.
So we need to close for the day?
Close half a day.
Half a day.
Oh, come on. Give them the day.
Half a day.
I appreciate it, but...
Make a motion, rather.
I have a motion.
I'll make the motion to close the county offices from 1:00 on next Friday, the 24th.
12.
12, 12 on.
Okay, now I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Need more discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? County offices will be closed half a day next Friday. Anything else?
The only other item, Mr. Chairman, is that I would request that you also add for our closed meeting session a second item, and that would be personnel.
Okay, entertain a motion to go in closed session under the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711A7 and A1. Consult with legal counsel regarding possible breach of contract and personnel matters. Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session. entertain a motion to come out of closed session?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, second. Come out of closed session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now at a closed session. Mr. Lester, you'll read the certification.
Whereas the West County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recording vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the West County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the West County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion meaning the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the West County Board of Supervisors.
Second on the certification of resolution. Second, any discussion or questions? Here none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ball?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye. Mr. Baer, is there anything else to come before the board at this time?
Mr. Chairman, we had a public hearing on water rates. I would like advice from the board if you...
I would like advice from the board if you all would like to put this on the agenda for the day meeting for consideration of adoption of revised water rates or how you would like to proceed on that.
What's the pleasure of the board? Do you think we need a work session to discuss the water rates or go ahead and move and put it on the agenda?
It's a little work session.
Well, there wasn't any opposition except minor. You know, we know what the rules are. They got to pay if water goes wrong their house. And what's the guy's name? The Sematol guy?
Brinkley.
Brinkley. What was the last length that they ran here about four or five years ago?
Same thing.
When they said he wasn't a good farmer.
Same thing?
Yep, same thing.
Same thing. So that was the last time we raised water rate.
Have we had any letters or emails? Has anybody else had any?
I have one email from a constituent in Coy McRoberts District that according to the tax records that I looked at, he is not in an area where public water is provided is, and the water department did not have his name as a customer of the water system. He was the only other one that I received any information from. He was, he was opposed to the tax, the water rate increase.
I mean, people that's contacted me is wanting us to run water, so.
I've had a couple contact me that were opposed to it. One of them was here tonight, but he didn't.
Didn't speak.
And I do have some questions about it. I don't, I mean, maybe a work session would be.
We could, you do a work session or you can do it during your day meeting, or if you want to, after you meet with the JIDA at three, come back over here four, four-thirty or whatever and stay in session here.
See, the meeting with the planning commission is at seven or six?
Six.
Six. Let's just, you know, when we, if we have time, we'll just, we'll have a work session that day. And if not, we'll schedule one.
I've had, I've had at least one person that I know of who told me she was against it.
I've, I've had several calls and I'll just be honest with you, I think it's too close to the real estate tax increase. I understand the need to bring up the revenue, but I just don't think now's the time to do it.
That, that big of a jump is what I've heard complaints about.
It's one pack of Marlboros and mud.
I know, I know that it's not that big of a jump.
Well, but the thing about it, people in my district, they didn't want the water. They don't, they still don't want the water. And ultimately, I think that's my job is to represent the people in my district. And I used to tell Dr. Housman, you know, Dr. Housman inherited because he wasn't on the board when, when the county started the water project. And, and I, you know, they used to come give him a hard time and I said, you know, Gary, I hated it before you. Here we are and now it's my baby, but.
Ryan, you weren't on town council, but when, when that water project, the Royal Retreat, there was one set of facts that made it doable. Your town manager of Royal Retreat reneged on that deal after the fact, and then it wasn't such a doable deal. But the loan was in progress, is that right, Stephen?
I don't remember all the details of that, Joe. I know that Mr. Dalton and the town manager had lots of conversations on trying to work on an interconnect.
Well, they went up, they went up so high, then they went up so high on their water rate. What they wanted us to purchase water from them was way higher than, than what we were willing to purchase water at. But we'll set up, we'll do a work session if we get back in time that day, next Thursday. If not, we'll, we'll set a work session that, that Thursday and talk about it. And, you know, I, I'll say, if things go up or we need to raise them ten percent or, or do it a couple of percent over some years to get it up where it's supposed to be.
I mean, we're, we're just at a disadvantage in that, like, you know, when they were talking, comparing town rates or whatever. Town's got a lot more density and a lot less length of lines. And I hate to say that we're late coming.
Everybody's hooked up paying water in town.
And, and we're late comers to some of these water lines, a lot of localities that had low water and a lot of other locations. And, and, and we've got a lot of debt to cover on it right now. And between that and, and the debt service on the New River Regional Water Authority, and that's an item we can discuss next week. I mean, we could talk about paying that not out of water revenue. If we want to look at that coming out of general fund dollars to pay for it.
Well, it's not right for the people in the county. It's not getting serviced by the water lines to be paying the water bills.
And we'll never have water.
And we'll never have water.
It would be possible to say raise the rate on the second, second thousand gallons and up and leave the initial thousand gallon rate the same. That way, it wouldn't affect everybody that's paying the non-user fee, because that seems to be a lot of the complaint.
It is, but it, I'll, I'll get the numbers from Don. I mean, you don't want to be encouraging people though not to connect. You're, we would be better off if we had these thousand people that weren't connected, and I don't know that's the exact number, but that weren't using the water because we would have, add more use and you'd have more revenue coming in. Part of the problem is, you know, would they estimate the number of users you're going to have and how many of you think are going to connect? And a lot of our projects have come in underneath and still don't have that capacity. So that's, he's right, the water rate was eleven dollars for the first thousand, and that came from an Eddie Hagy move a long time ago.
They lowered it to that.
Yep. And that really hurt our water system. When they, when they did that, that really hurt our, our payments because we had so many users that were just paying the nine, ten, eleven dollars a month, non-user rate at that point in time. And that's when we started, that's when we started, first thing going into the hole when we made some revisions to get the rates up to the eighteen dollars, and then we went up to eighteen ninety on the last increase for the first thousand gallons.
I, I don't know whether you can put together the history, but Coy, Coy probably knows all this. He had Ivanhoe and Austinville have a little water system that was put in by the company. So they didn't have any debt and the shoestring operation that worked. They got federal money and put in the Max Meadows system. So that didn't cost. But when you start trying to consolidate, one of the things we lost sight of, and I believe this, you're really in the retail water business. It costs the same money to build a plant, and we've got a plant with two million gallon capability and we're only using four hundred thousand gallons. Is that about right?
That's full of the report. It's a little more than that. Yeah.
We're using more than that.
I don't think so. We're pumping out of wells to keep from using water plants, right?
We, we have been pumping out of the wells, yes.
Because that don't cost us anything.
Well, it does. It costs to run electric.
Well, we ain't, we're not buying water from you.
It is cheaper, it is cheaper to get out of the wells, yes.
You, you got the tank maintenance, which we're sort of slight on, and you got to pay to run the pumps, you got your maintenance. But you, I think you told me we pay about a dollar and quarter a thousand to New River Water. Most people in the world, not just the free world, most people in the world would like to get water for a dollar and quarter a thousand. Stephen and I have talked about selling water. That's not in the package, but we ought to be in the business of selling water. Anybody in With County wants to buy bulk water to fill pools, make money on that. That's the revenue stream. I think it costs between four and five hundred dollars to fill a pool, depending on the size of the pool. And they go out of county to do it and hire somebody to haul it. And we talked at length about a way to solve that problem. But you're in the retail water business and we don't have water lines, and Stephen knows where they are, Coy knows where they are, and eastern in the county, with a little bit of short line, we could pick up another probably hundred to two hundred customers. But we don't have the money to put those service lines in to get more customers. How many, Stephen, off the top of the head, could you think of where subdivisions have built up with a water line right beside the property and we don't have service in the subdivisions?
There's a few locations.
And see, in my former life, the town of Dublin paid their, all their debts practically from selling water. They snookered the town of Pulaski into serving, selling water for forty-six cents a gallon for twenty years. And then everybody that built the subdivision had to put public water in, put the meter bases in as a developer. And then for three hundred dollars, you didn't have to drill a well. You have public water. The county got, or town got paid for everything and then they got a water customer. We didn't do it that way here.
But it's, you know, it's like everything else, cost of operating and maintenance and, and, you know, people's salaries and stuff go up. And they, it, you know, I understand it. A lot of people don't understand it.
My opinion on that is that people that complain paying twenty dollars for water have never had stinking water, have never had muddy water, and they have never been without water. They'd be glad to pay twenty dollars. What was the success rate down at Baron Springs where people really wanted water?
Within that lone ash or lone ash auto shot, it was very high, the number that connected there. I don't remember the percentage. Castleton Road was more along the normal, those that needed it and those that didn't want it and didn't like the project. But the, inside that Baron Springs proper, you're, there was a high percentage.
There's no good water down there.
No, most of them were all on either their own, on that useless system that was down there.
Well, you know, the calls I get, you know, requests is down at the dam, which the, the town has got a line right to the dam, but they will not go across to the other side in that little subdivision on the other side, which I used to live there. They got bad water. I had to have a chlorinating system on my well system. The rest, I've got UV light systems on theirs.
I've got two calls from them today.
Back here, you can't say that.
Yeah.
I've got two calls in the last two days on wanting water on that side of the creek.
If we run, could, we buy water from the town, run a water line from there over to that subdivision and buy water from the dam?
Probably would have to happen. I was going to talk to the town about it, just see where they were. But, you know, the town charges, that's, you know, a lot of people talk about the town rates. I think Royal Retreat for three thousand gallons is about twenty-three sixty, Withfield's twenty-two eleven. But for out of town rates, they double though. So it's forty-six dollars and forty-four dollars, if you will, for the out of town rates on that. That subdivision down there, I think they've talked to the town also, and I don't know that the town's got an interest in running the line over there, but we could look at running the line.
Man, it's a health hazard. I mean.
And it, we'd have to look at it and see, you know, what funding is available. Currently, just so you all know, and Don and I are meeting on it later this week, we've had apparently another bracket break loose on that, on the Max Meadows Bridge.
Didn't we ask to go ahead and do that?
Well, we've got money in there for the engineering, but we, we were trying to get money from Mount Rogers or anybody else to do it, and we don't have that money yet. So currently, we've turned the water off, serving Max Meadows out of the Max Meadows side, serving the other side, just to keep from having any additional weight on that line right now. They're looking at what they can do to make some temporary repairs on it, but also trying to see what we can do to speed up that process.
When's it coming in front of Mount Rogers? I mean, has it been submitted?
I think it's, I think it has been submitted. I don't know when it's coming in front of them. And they're talking about not even certain that they're going to get their, their funding. They told us to go ahead and put everything in, but they're not certain they're getting their funding. So we've alerted the health department because we said, you know, you need to know what's going on. I mean, everything's still functional as is. We want to get it replaced sooner than later. And that's just, you know, that's one of the examples of needing, needing the, the reserve setting there to handle emergency situations.
So Max Meadows working off the well and tank.
Yeah. That, nothing's changed for them except they don't have a backup. That's it.
Okay, is there anything else any board member would like to bring up at this time? Here none, we'll be in recess until three PM next Thursday, the? Twenty-third.